Will the main door please run? We can have a moment of silence to keep our troops, our law enforcement, and all emergency responders that they always come home safe. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law, notice that this public meeting has been published in the Home Districts and our letter newspapers and posted on the Middlesex County website as well as on the voting board in the Middlesex County Administration Building at least four eight hours in advance of this meeting, which shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Escuena Barber, here.
Here.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Hopple, here. County Commissioner McCollum, here. County Commissioner Nara, here. County Commissioner Tamara, here. County Commissioner Director Rios, here.
And your correspondents.
Each Commissioner can provide with this, of course, by receiving on file received by the Court of the Board's office since our last meeting, as corresponds with the court on file, also the Office of the Circle of the Board members.
Motion to accept the correspondence.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Minutes for approval.
Minutes of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting at seven P. M. and minutes of December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, wrap-up meeting at six o'clock P. M.
Is there a motion to accept approval?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Escuena Barber, yes. County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Hopple. County Commissioner McCollum, yes. County Commissioner Nara, present and not voting. County Commissioner Tamara, yes. County Commissioner Director Rios, yes.
Yes, we have mortgages and the introduction of first week is part of the number twenty-three dash zero zero one.
Orderment twenty-three dash zero zero one, guarantee ordinance securing the Middlesex County improvement authorities, County of Middlesex, guarantee revenue bond, New Jersey help and life science exchange, each one project, series twenty twenty-three, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety million dollars, and authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven o'clock P. M., authorizing publication thereof and determining certain other matters in connection therewith.
Is there a motion to approve order number twenty-three zero zero one on first week?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Escuena Barber, yes. County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Hopple. County Commissioner McCollum, yes. County Commissioner Nara, yes. County Commissioner Tamara, yes. County Commissioner Director Rios, yes.
Our meeting orders number four-six-six.
County of Middlesex, bond ordinance number four-six-six, bond ordinance providing for the community innovation opportunities, strategic investment plan for and by the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating the aggregate amount of eight-two million eight-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand five-hundred-and-twenty dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of eighty-one million five-hundred-and-forty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars in bonds or notes, and authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven o'clock P. M., and authorizing publication thereof.
Is there a motion to approve order number four-six-six?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Escuena Barber, yes. County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Hopple. County Commissioner McCollum, yes. County Commissioner Nara, yes. County Commissioner Tamara, yes. County Commissioner Director Rios, yes.
Yes, it was a commissioners, Commissioner Escuena Barber.
Thank you, Director Rios. On Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, Middlesex County will have the annual point in time count of homeless individuals and families, including those who are in emergency charters and uncharted. Outreach will be conducted in specific areas. Donated coats, blankets, hygiene kits, and food will be passed out and information to be available for services to be provided. In addition, a live promise in New Brunswick and the Bryanston Bay area, Y C A, with Royal Board, will be projected homeless connect sites. Data from the count will be compiled into a report and used to identify services. A special thanks to all the agencies participating in helping to conduct a survey, providing donations and health screenings. The point in time count is coordinated by both the County's Office of Human Services and County Home of Middlesex County. Do you need any help with prescription drug costs? You may be eligible for P A D, Senior Code, and other NJ Safe programs if you are age sixty-five or older, or between the ages eighteen and sixty-four and are receiving social security disability benefits. NJ Safe is an online application to help low-income consumers and individuals with disabilities save money on Medicare premiums, prescription costs, and other living expenses. To learn more about NJ Safe or other available program, call the Office of Aging and Safety Service or visit the county webpage, and that concludes for Director Rios.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Kenny?
Thank you, Director. I have nothing on my agenda tonight to talk about, but I want to talk about my neighbor who passed away last week. He was a great guy. He was a great neighbor. He had such energy about him that I always said if I could model up just one-tenth of it, I'd be in a lot better position than I am. He took great pride in our neighborhood. He was the type of guy that if on his side of the street, the sun come out, melt the snow a little bit earlier than on my side of the street, you'd see him out there cutting his grass, meanwhile, I'm still trying to scrape the ice off of my sidewalk. He was that type of guy. Sometimes you'd find him in the summertime, cutting your lawn, or even pulling the weeds out of the cracks in the roadway out front just to make the neighborhood look even better. For Memorial Day, July fourth, and Labor Day, he'd come out on Saturday morning and find American flags placed all up and down the street along the edges of the driveways on both sides, and then on Monday night, he'd come out on Tuesday and the flag would be put away, and, you know, he'd wait for the next holiday to do it. And the reason I bring him up is he was a gentleman that used to umpire in our county softball league. He was a gentleman that used to umpire, I believe it was our county basketball tournament that we would have in March, our baseball leagues. He would umpire for the high schools and stuff like that. And not only that, he also taught in our county Votec school for thirty-five years. And then after retirement, he would try to continue to reach students by working and doing homeschooling. And so I just want to mention Joe Dennis, a great guy, great neighbor, and if we all had one in our neighborhood like him, we'd be a lot better off. And that's all I have, Director. Thank you.
He was a great guy, and I got to know him through our pancreatic cancer softball tournaments that the Parks Department would run. He would be an umpire there donating his time. So he really was a pillar of the community in every sense of the word. He will surely be missed. Thank you. County Commissioner Leslie Kopp.
Thank you, Director, and thank you, Commissioner Kenny, for sharing your story and your thoughts about your neighbor. And it is, I think it's one of the real lucky things that we have living in Middlesex County and being surrounded by people who make it special, and it's neighborhoods and those people that we are really honored to serve here in the county, so I very appreciate you sharing that. On to a much more interesting note, I'd like to share big news about the county audits, the twenty-twenty-one county audits. Over the past ten years, the Board of Commissioners has been committed to specific long-term and short-term fiscal strategies and policies and fortifying annual budgets. This commitment has strengthened the county's financial wellbeing and has resulted over the years in stable budget growth, continuous reduction in total debt and annual debt, increase in service funds, and recreation of pay-as-you-go capital. Our annual financial audits are reaffirmation and verification of this continued commitment to maintain a strong fiscal house. Financial annual audits are independent, objective, third-party inspections of financial transactions, records, and reporting activities of the county with focus on compliance and adherence to the specific fiscal indicators. Tonight, we are accepting following twenty-twenty-one fiscal audits of our additional officers, constitutional officers, that is, the audit of the prosecutor's office, the audit of the surrogates office, and the audit of the county clerk's office. There are no other, there are no audit or recommendations on any of these audits, and this is yet another direct reflection of town financial operations in Middlesex County. I think we're.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheryl Scott McCollum.
Thank you, Director. And Commissioner Kenny, my condolences to you, John's family and the neighborhood. I'm sure he has a new neighborhood, and that's holiday. Looking for flags, and they'll be there, starting their. From the Office of Business Engagement, good evening and happy new year to everyone. As you know, the Office of Business Engagement is a simple manner of contact connecting businesses to a wide range of county, of county, or internal and external resources and services. Please visit us for details on doing business in Middlesex County at middlesexcounty.gov. Our business engagement team will be attending Middlesex County twenty-twenty-three Economic Outlook at Middlesex College on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, as well as twenty-twenty-four Central Jersey, New Jersey Real Estate Forecast at Princeton, at the Princeton area at Forest Hill on Friday, January twenty-seventh. And we will be available to discuss the county's economic agenda and the opportunities for investment into our innovation, innovation economy. From the Arts Institute, the county is proud to support several municipalities partnering in the windows of Understanding Public Art and Exhibition. I love this when the towns do this. I try to drive through the towns myself. The vision for this public art project is to transform our main street spaces into liberal windows of understanding spaces for which the community can learn about the positive strides being made by local organizations. The artwork is on display from now until April first in storefronts in the following towns: Brunswick, Highland Park, Lintachin, and South Beach. For more information, visit www dot windowsofunderstanding dot org. From the Office of Career Opportunity, I'm happy to announce that the Office of Career Opportunities Business Solutions Team will be hosting a virtual hiring event on Wednesday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, from eleven to one, featuring more than two dozen employees, employers, excuse me, from the rapidly growing advanced and veteran healthcare, pharmaceuticals, life sciences, or transportation, logistics, and distribution industry centers. Register for the event by visiting our website. Director, that concludes our report.
Thank you. Commissioner Stephanie Director, change now.
Thank you, Director. From our Environmental, Solid Waste, and Recycling Divisions, in twenty-twenty-two, the divisions collected the following materials. Our fluorescent lipo program netted seventeen thousand six hundred and ten pounds of bowls. Then, three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight residents participated in the division's household hazardous waste collection program, which netted us three hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty-five pounds of hazardous materials. As for our paper shred collections, which is our most popular program, over six thousand five hundred and eighty-nine residents produced two hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty pounds of paper products. All of these materials were safely collected and recycled, thus continuing the county's tradition of creating a cleaner and greener Middlesex County. In two thousand twenty-three, the divisions will, of course, again be conducting these programs. Please check the county's website or call our divisions at seven-three-two-seven-four-five four-one-seven-zero for dates, times, and locations of all of these services. From the Office of Emergency Management, on the heels of recent statewide school security initiatives, announced by Governor Murphy to enhance the overall safety of the school community, Middlesex County Department of Public Safety, the Office of Emergency Management and Preparedness, has taken additional steps to ensure the increased safety and security of students and staff here in Middlesex County. Using federal grant funding under the Urban Area Security Initiative Program, the Middlesex County Office of Emergency Management and Preparedness wrote a project to procure emergency trauma stations for every school within Middlesex County. This project includes all public, private charter, and county magnet schools to increase the early access to vital emergency medical equipment within the school community in the event of a mass casualty incident or disaster. When emergencies occur, the early access to lifesaving medical equipment is vital to increasing positive outcomes for the injured. These kits will allow for the immediate access to that equipment by not only emergency responders, but by school staff and students alike. These kits were purchased at no impact to the operational budget for the school districts and designed to create a uniform response object across the county to help ensure that our students and our school communities continue to live and work and learn in a safe environment. And I just want to also acknowledge the wonderful tribute that Commissioner Kennedy and likewise condolences to the family and the community for their loss. And then the last thing I'm going to say is somewhat related to the, well, it's the Office of Emergency Management, but I just want to put out there, there's going to be more publication, but there's a program called CERT, Community Emergency Response Team. And for those of you who are watching this and don't know, CERT team members are their neighbors. And what they are are volunteers. And the sole purpose of CERT is to provide backup for the responders, our police, our fire, our emergency first aid. And so there's a training process, and for people who can't make the amazing contributions that our fire volunteers make, our EMS makes, and certainly maybe not police, this is an opportunity where you can still be involved, helping your community in so many amazing ways. There is training involved, but I can tell you, I'm part of my town's CERT team. I was very involved for a while, and then being on the county, I've been less involved, but I'm reintegrating myself into the team. And I can't tell you a more worthwhile thing to do if you want to give back to your community. So I'm going to do a pitch and say to the residents in all of our twenty-five towns, if you're looking for a way to not only give back to your community, but to engage with your neighbors and do something super positive, please go on the county website, or importantly, contact your town, your O E M. director, and find out if there's a CERT team in your town and how you can get involved. So that's it, Director. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheryl, turn around.
Thank you, Director. I'd like to give a big shout-out, thank all who came out for our twenty-twenty-two volunteer dirt time Middlesex County Constellation. Throughout the year, volunteers collected thousands of pounds of litter, and it was well by the trees and throes while removing invasive species or plant species from many of our county parks and open spaces. In twenty-twenty-two alone, more than nine hundred and fifty feet of volunteer dirt time was stolen nearly three thousand hours. Please check out our park's website for more information on our next volunteer events so you can come out and join us in two thousand twenty-three. If you're starting to feel a little cabin fever and want to come out to our family ice skating rink for some outdoor fun and overlook on our beautiful Roosevelt Park lake, enjoy the fresh crisp air while skating for your pleasure during our open skating sessions or while taking ice skating lessons. Information about the rink and for the hours and pricing can be found on our website. In our picnic season, I know you're already making the plan, I know some of you want to already make plans for the warmer weather in spring and summer, so I wanted to let you know that our park's office will be taking, start taking picnic reservations for our twenty-twenty-three season on February first. All reservations are being done on our electronic reservation system, so head to our website to find more information you need to reserve your picnic sites. And also I'd like to thank you for sharing your neighbor's story. You think, you could take over the baton and put out all those flags and stuff, maybe bring them to our place.
Somebody's going to have to.
Sure, maybe a bunch of neighbors can get together and do that. That's all I have, Director.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kelso, does this wish to be added?
There are none.
Does it wish to be amended?
There are none.
Or it wants to be held?
There are none.
It wants to be avoided. This time, I open up the meeting to the public for discussion on only items listed on the agenda of natural resolutions.
Good evening, Commissioners. Charlie Cradaville from New Brunswick, editor of New Brunswick Today. Start by saying, sorry, career loss. And I wanted just to ask about Resolution sixty-six on page eight, is an agreement between Perd Amboy and the county regarding Code Blue. Can somebody enlighten me as to what the city of Perd Amboy is doing for this hundred and nineteen thousand dollars?
Melissa?
Every time my county calls a Code Blue, they open up the J. Chelsea Center on Auto Street as a shelter for individuals. They provide food, most of this money goes to staffing. They do it in coordination with the Y in Perd Amboy, that provides them a lot of support. They also have police costs because they have police at the shelter for that as well. So, but it's overtime for staff, it's the coordination with the Y, it's the food that they bring in, it's the cleaning, it's the laundering of the materials, all that stuff.
And my understanding of the grant is it's one where they take on the expenses themselves, then put it for reimbursement from the county?
Yes.
That's how it works? Okay, so I guess, you know, they'll be putting it for the November, December expenses against this?
Yes.
Thank you. I did want to, on the topic of Code Blue, thank the, you know, folks who do make that possible. Unfortunately, it leaves a lot to be desired. I know that, for instance, tonight, there was no Code Blue, correct?
Yes, it hasn't, I can't believe it.
Right, so when you leave the building tonight and you get a feel for the weather and the elements, you ask yourself if it's acceptable for dozens of people to be stranded outside, you know, sleeping in abandoned buildings and parks, or, you know, just around the city of New Brunswick and other places. And I was really disappointed on Friday, you know, the county did call Code Blue, but the message didn't get to New Brunswick, and so New Brunswick did not open the warming center on Friday night. So I want to understand with this grant, how are the towns informed of when the county calls a Code Blue, and what's being done to prevent this communication?
Melissa, can you answer this? Or Joe?
Let me just, as a reference to what took place last week, there was a breakdown with the email chain. I don't know what occurred, whether it was that, or we're not building that was in, and hopefully we're notified that there was a rain right there. As far as the process of the Code Blue, is that Joe?
What's that? As far as Code Blue? It's a state statute, which we adhere to. Once it meets the criteria of the state statute, the county sends out emails to, we're only required to send out to two municipalities in Brunswick or Danboy, we send out to all twenty-five.
Good, good. And where do you check the weather? What's the source of the prediction?
The source of the prediction is if it's thirty-two degrees or below, it's Code Blue by statute, the state statute. Or if it's wind chill factor of minus zero for two hours, it's Code Blue.
Thank you for that. Can you tell me where you check the weather? What source you use to determine when Code Blue is called?
It's studied by each county, so if we get the weather forecast, which I get every single day, if it says it's going to be thirty-two or below, that is Code Blue.
Just curious, where the forecast comes from?
The National Weather Service, right, Joe?
Yes, and we also have one that deals directly with Middlesex County, which comes out to our road department.
Okay, I would love to know, you know, what the source is so I could, you know, see it myself, and if there's a breakdown again, like what happened on Friday, I would know right away, if there's supposed to be a Code Blue or not, instead of having to, you know, email people and try to track down and not know what the source is. So perhaps somebody can follow up with me and let me know, you know, where the roads department gets their weather forecast?
Joe, can you make sure you take care of that?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate all the answers on that. I'm very disappointed by what happened. I'm glad that something's been prevented from happening again. I also wanted to ask about number twenty, the first resolution. Contractor Kelso.
Which one?
The very first one, number twenty. So Mr. Kelso, correct me if I'm wrong, paid over two-hundred thousand dollars to work full-time for the county government. He also has a private law firm on this side that represents many developers here in New Brunswick and other places, and the county is deciding to hire once again Mr. Kelso's firm. And I wanted to ask, who made that decision?
Your time is up, Mr. Cradaville. You have a time. You will have an opportunity to ask another question or continue in the public portion. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore. Due to where I would also like to comment on sixty-six, where I have quite a few questions with Code Blue and weather. I would like to ask you, first of all, how does Perd Amboy alert their homeless people that it is Code Blue?
Perd Amboy, like I said, operates with the Y in Perd Amboy, and the Y has a drop-in center that is frequented by individuals, unsheltered individuals in their community. So they get the word out that way, their police department spreads the word, they let their chapter of war know. So, and then it's also on two-one-one, it's in all the different facilities that provide whether two pantries or food services for the afternoon.
I'm glad to hear this, and if the counties are in charge of this well, please pass it over to New Brunswick, due to where, wow, all they do is put it on Facebook. You have the homeless where people do not have cell phones to get the notice of Code Blue. And due to where, what, every night, due to where guessing, where I'm still wondering how do you get your temperature regards to each place, due to where, if you get your phone out now, it tells you a different temperature, how I get my cell phone out, it'll tell you a different temperature, where every township is not the same temperature at the same time. And I really think it needs to be investigated as well, as far as we're getting the temperature for Code Code Blue. But like I said, due to where, what, New Brunswick is a police department, and like I said, sorry how they get paid to sit on, has to do nothing, where they, they used to go around announcing Code Blue, due to where, like I said, everyone does not have a cell phone to get the alert of Code Blue. So this as well, I hope you can speak to Mayor Kayo and Pete Jones, due to where, wow, it's not very good with it, you just heard what just happened over the past thirty days, with Code Blue with New Brunswick, due to where, I also heard you say, due to where part of these grants is to help clean this, due to where, what, it was a serious situation, due to where so much contamination in Code Blue with New Brunswick, where the sheets or nothing wasn't getting clean cleaned, oh, City Council.
This is a resolution of Perd Amboy and.
Well, please, please, like I said, if you, if you say.
Let's stay with the subject of the resolution for Perd Amboy.
Well, like I said, due to where, if you could say the announcement for Perd Amboy, please, I hope you make the announcement to treat every place the same, same way. Now, if you weren't even going to say it that way, and then like I said, wow, every time, what, you know, you're guilty on something, you always try to get somebody out of here, due to where, what, you let Mr. Cradaville answer.
There's a public portion that you can bring that part up, isn't there?
Please, like I said, due to where, and then also seventy-three, I see three-hundred thousand dollars going to homelessness with Highland Park, wow, New Brunswick has way more homeless people than Highland Park, like I said, breaking, I'm back there, you're doing it, but wow, please, as much more homeless in New Brunswick has, due to where the mayor tried to kick everybody out.
Let's talk about the Highland Park resolution.
Okay, yeah, you always take over your buddy, but like I said, wow, hopefully we can see three-hundred thousand dollars come towards, towards New Brunswick help, due to where, what, we have tripled the amount homeless over here. Then, another question, due to where seventy-eight, I wanted to ask a question about with opioid settlements. Am I out the comment on this?
Yes, it's number seventy-eight, and it's about the Opioid Settlement Advisory Council.
And then another.
The charges for that.
Well, okay, due to where, I want, I would make an announcement, please, and like I said, I was very upset, due to where a person who takes pain medicine, how they treat everyone like you have an addiction problem, due to where, I just saw another one on the other side, where you put the Narcan, due to where, come on, like I said, it upsets me every time I do get my pain meds.
Let's talk about the resolution where it says about the members. Do you want, do you have a question in reference to who the members of that advisory council is, or how is it selected?
One thing I will ask, like, come on, please prove, how can you prove addiction to something, and like I said, a lot of it assuming, and maybe, like I said, another day I will get into that, but like I said, I was very angry how everyone is treated, due to where all these settlements are going in, due to where if you take pain meds.
Anyone else in the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, vote for the candidates. Okay, any, Commissioner has to vote on anything separately?
I do want to give it to.
Okay, Mr. Kelso? Okay, Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Commissioner, a motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number 23 dash 20. The Resolution 23 dash 151 excluding Resolution 23 dash 82 would be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Local?
County Commissioner Ashburn Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Coppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tomaro?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director?
Yes.
Now, Director, it would be appropriate to consider the resolution is fluid by Commissioner Tomaro, that is Resolution Number 23 dash 82.
Is there a motion to adopt?
A motion. Second.
Local?
County Commissioner Ashburn Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Coppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tomaro? County Commissioner Director?
Yes. At this time, I open up the meeting to the public. Anybody have any comments? Please come up, just state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. What is the timeline for replacing Mr. Cavaness, who currently resigned as transportation director? Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. What's the timeline for replacing Mr. Cavaness?
So, upon the transportation vacancy, we moved Lee Andrew Lewis, the Department of Business Education Foundation, Innovation Opportunity, over to the Department of Transportation. So we're just realigning him on the Department of Transportation, which brings the vacancy in the BIO department, which we're now in the process of going out for a search relative to fill in that position.
Okay, so there's no longer a vacancy in transportation?
Transportation, transportation, that department.
I believe Mr. Andrews here. Can we hear from him then, what the timeline is to restore lost service for New Brunswick, a service that's been taken away from us now for almost three years?
Director?
Yes.
I know after the last time we asked about this, Charlie, I met with Khalid and Stanley, and they were going to be getting the information together to see the demand that has been out there, and then we were going to meet and go over from there. So it was, was it the fifteenth, the last time we asked, or descend nine, the twenty?
I think it was. Sometimes it's.
So, yes, they're getting the information together so we can have a meeting to go over to see how high the demand is for us wrapped in New Brunswick.
Yeah, well, I will at least anecdotally tell you that many of my neighbors do not have vehicles, and the public transportation was already lacking, and when the county took away those routes and never restored the M5, folks really are having a hard time getting around. Folks who live in the fourth ward, like the public housing, have to pay to come downtown, and folks who are in the mainland of New Brunswick have to pay to get to the Board of Social Services now, which is really, one of the main reasons that route existed was to facilitate getting to that county facility, and now people have to use private vehicles, Uber, cabs, whatever, to get there. And we should be moving in the other direction, not rolling back service. So I encourage you to, you know, meet that demand in New Brunswick with a sensible route that's going to provide meaningful service for our residents. And please, whoever is in charge, it's Mr. Andrews now, let's get the Transportation Coordinating Committee to meet again. It's been over two years. It used to be a very productive, constructive body that would meet sometimes in this room and go over all the latest with transportation, have all the people at the table who needed to be there. And I don't know why, under Mr. Cavaness, that went away, but can Mr. Andrews tell us? Can he bring that back? When is it going to restore that committee?
Well, it's just, as Commissioner Kenny stated, it's a work in progress. They're doing a study to see how much demand is there and what the options are.
On the TCC, so it went away because of COVID. You know, we stopped meeting because of COVID. And then Solomon had a, had been working, I believe, with Doug, I could be wrong on that, but I believe they had been having a discussion of what they want the TCC to be when they bring it back, and we're looking to bring it back this year. So we'll continue to look at that framework and give it back this year.
Hope to see you there. And, you know, I do want to circle back to Code Blue. I currently, about eighty minutes a year that they have Code Blue, and it's nice that the towns that do it, do it, but we need to do way more. You know, when you get outside tonight, ask yourself if you would be comfortable with any of your friends, neighbors, or family members spending tonight outside, but that's what we're asking the houses, community of New Brunswick, Perth Amboy, and the rest of the county to do tonight because we're not offering the Code Blue tonight. So as nice as it is, the county's chipping in to help New Brunswick and Perth Amboy, we need to expand those services and do much better. I'm deeply concerned about the situation at the Code Blue shelter in New Brunswick, where I've, you know, heard firsthand complaints about people smoking in the building, inability to access the bathrooms because folks are occupying the bathrooms for hours at a time, staff not helping people, you know, and heard from volunteers who went there and saw disgusting situations, you know, unclean amenities being provided to the folks there. And so ninety thousand for New Brunswick and a hundred and nineteen thousand for Perth Amboy, you can get that somewhere, but it's not there where we need to be, we need to do better today.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Daniel Moore. First question I do have, I know I see Simon Johnson Park stating that it's a fine illegal to feed birds. Can you please tell me, is that just for the park, or is that for the entire county of Middlesex, where you are not allowed to feed birds?
I would have to refer to Rick, but I would assume that that's a policy to save the birds, so no matter what, do we have control of the rest of the county? No, we only have control of what we can in our county parks.
So is, so is this the law for the park? Is that what you're just saying? Only a law that, only in Johnson Park?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking further into that. Now, I would get back to Code Blue, the ninety thousand, and thank you for your help and believe me for witness, like I said, if any of you take your time to watch city council meeting, due to where you will hear President Al Escobar from city council, where she went over and investigated to Code Blue when New Brunswick is, and thank you, Jesus, if she didn't have to concern to go investigate, wow, wouldn't it seem that evidence of how nasty and dirty, due to where the sheets weren't clean, the water wasn't working? So please, please look at the tape or please go ask her, but please, I advise someone, please investigate, due to where, like I said, it's not being done properly, or what, due to where a volunteer came down and spoke up at city council, now New Brunswick no longer accepts, what, volunteers? Why? Because they spoke up of what was going wrong in there? And for so many years, you kept saying, Keith Jones is doing a good job, please, that's a bunch of crap. And I would like to get back to you, due to where I felt we're pretty assaulted, and like I said, your words will come back and bite you in your rear end, the way you told me, how I reacted towards this, with the cancer center, the racism towards cancer or whatever you said, due to where I'm not against cancer. I watched my grandmother die in hospice with cancer. I'm dealing with my mom getting cancer. It scared me, due to where they said she had arthritis at first, what, it's bone cancer, due to where I have arthritis in my back where I can't sit or stand, due to without getting my nerves burned. Yeah, first thing, it scared me, and I told you when I walked out the door, what, scared me so bad, but I lost down here fifteen pounds. I'm not against anyone with cancer, but wow, let me tell you this, like I said, the crime, in the past thirty days, nine aggravated assaults, nine robberies, thirty-eight simple assault. Please, look on the map and you tell me, where is that at? Right where I told you, it's not safe for no school to go, and I love my mom, but I wouldn't put anyone's child in danger of what's going on over there, due to where the police are not doing anything. And to be a victim where a man came and grabbed me, and the police wouldn't do anything, grabbed four other women and wouldn't do nothing, even though I'm not scared, because every man that puts their hand on me is dead. And just like, I told him the fourth one, the last one, he was the fourth one to put his hands on me, dead, but I didn't do it, but I still wouldn't, I'm not against cancer. But I told you from get-go, due to where I see things, and hey, hey, the Lord lets me see, and I proved that to so many of you before. I wouldn't dare put no child at risk of going, is due to where, wow, just from that man coming behind me, grabbing me, what, the next day I had to go to the hospital where my son dad said, ooh, I was running around the house, where is this man? Where is this man? I wouldn't dare want no little child to go through that. And like I said, all of you will regret doing that for your buddy, mayor, mayor, and death cult, for putting children at risk. Like I said, my mom is sick, like I said, good, but it's not good, but like I said, but when you got cancer, it's not like, ooh, it's a cure, you're going to do it, but why else, somebody young, would I risk their life at what? Putting, trying to save someone's life? No, I would not. And like I said, all of you will regret it, due to where how dangerous it is over there, so many drunk men and all, due to where I saw a post with you, well, ooh, good about the hub, what, I truly hope you wasn't talking about the hub liquor store over there, due to where, what, what? Did somebody two weeks ago just get stabbed over there? Like I said, wow, remember the problem used to be Repson Avenue, the problem is French Street and Jersey Avenue? Please, look at the maps. If it's not the car crashes, the drunk driving, how many crashes over there? I can't list every one, but like I said, and from my heart, please, each one of you will regret for not listening, due to where, what? Money is not everything. Money's not going to save your life in every way, what, Richard Moore? You will need to help and pass something.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries, and motion returned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries, any adjournments?